Okay, I'm calling the special council committee of the whole meeting to order. It's December 16th at noon. Craig Cobb, would you call the role?
I'd be glad to. Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Cobb, here. Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Well, now that we know we're all here, we're here for the purpose of, this is a confirmation hearing for the former mayor of Akron, Daniel Horrigan. So what we're going to do is, I'm just going to open it up for questions and if you want to do an opening statement.
Provide a little bit of an opening statement before we begin.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That was actually the next thing I was going to say. And Mayor, you want to start?
Sure, and it'll be brief. So I just wanted to express that I am delighted to present Dan Horrigan as a candidate for city administrator here in the city of Cleveland Heights. Obviously, Mr. Horrigan has a great deal of experience that is directly relevant to the work that we need to do in this city to provide all of the amenities and the services in an efficient and effective way to the residents of Cleveland Heights. And I'm frankly just filled with gratitude that he is willing to continue his service to the community in our community. As mayor, Mr. Horrigan has dealt with a great deal of the same problems that we've dealt with here in Cleveland Heights. And that experience, I think, is directly transferable in a wide variety of arenas. And I think that we will benefit from his addition to this team. So that's why I'm presenting him to you today for your consideration. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Horrigan to provide an opening statement as well.
I keep saying good morning, but I know it's afternoon now, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. If you all seem to vote in the affirmative, I think there's a number of, there's a lot of experience I think that I can bring to the position and to be able to help. And I look forward to continuing to serve the community in a very public service role. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you. Actually, I'm going to ask the mayor one question first, and then I'll open it up to everybody else. Mayor, just for context, could you say how many applicants there were and how many people you interviewed and how we got to Mr. Horrigan?
So I'd have to take a moment to go back and double check our application system in order to tell you how many applicants. But I interviewed exactly one person, and that was Mr. Horrigan. And I wouldn't even call it necessarily an interview. It was a series of conversations about his experience, about his interest in continuing his public service. I thought that it was an extremely well-fit relationship here, and so that's why I wanted to jump on this opportunity and move forward.
All right, thank you. Who would like to ask questions?
Excuse me.
Councilwoman Maddox?
Good morning or good afternoon. I'm doing it too.
See, I got you started.
Just a series of questions. Just excited to have you with us this morning. And just for everyone to get to know a little bit more about you and your processes, could you talk to me a little bit about any programs that you've implemented or rolled out or had to build from the ground up? Just to give us a sense of how you handle those processes and things like that.
Well, there is a long list of, and it really depended on the issue as it came up. And there have been a number of legislative and administrative and executive roles that I played, whether it was on city council and replacing water lines, whether it was the clerk of courts and automation so attorneys could file remotely, not necessarily have to file on paper. Or, and I think the most significant ones probably were as mayor. We had a kind of a, not a really good housing market in the city of Akron when we took over and did a number of studies on what we can do to improve housing. One of the things that came back, and the key thing that came back, was abatement of property taxes. And it kind of, it caused some consternation, but we had literally taken out about seven building permits in about four years, so there was no new construction. And by the time it had gone, it's between 1,000 and 1,500 over eight years on new construction. That's just one aspect of it. That's just the housing part of it, too. To me, I think cities are very complex organizations with really a simple mission. I think it's about customer service. And so whether we were investing in public space or investing in downtown or in housing, we have the worst. And I had a brief conversation with your service director about our consent decree when it comes to sewers. You know, our total, that is a daily process of, if you're familiar with consent decrees and what you have to dump and what you can't dump in the river, I mean, it ended up being a billion dollars. And so working with both EPA's and a number of different engineering groups and constituent groups about what is best for the river, I'm happy to point out that we have a 99.9% capture rate, you know, when it comes to combined sewers. That is significant. It's not 100%, but by EPA decree, and this is just one small example, they're asking us to get to 100%. So there's a lot of experience in dealing with or navigating those, you know, somewhat pitfalls and somewhat agencies to be able to get to a good number. It's very brief. I don't want to bore you with a 25-year history of what's going on, but those are just a few.
Thank you. Follow-up questions?
Oh, please.
Thank you. Just in terms of rolling out those programs in departments and engaging with the community and intercommunication between departments, could you share any experience or knowledge that you have around process improvements or shortening procedures or streamlining processes that you think might help us here in the city?
Well, to me, especially being kind of a large organization with almost 2,000 employees or just about 1,800 plus, there was a lot of walls built up with, you know, engineering wasn't necessarily talking to planning, planning wasn't necessarily talking to customer service, and nobody was really talking to residents. And so we initiated a series of residential, you know, town hall meetings, so to speak, to kind of get their feedback. And quite frankly, some of the things that we were interested in doing, they didn't necessarily register with registered residents. They were worried about, you know, what about this empty building? How come this high grass doesn't get cut? How about speeding in the neighborhoods? And so you kind of have to get a feel for, and then rolling out what you'd like to see. Instead of just cutting the grass at empty lot, why don't we build a house? And so you kind of marry those two things. To me, it is a lot about engagement on some of those things and opening up that process and then making people, I mean, I don't think you can be afraid to fail when it comes to that. And I told my top staff and cabinet that, you know, it's, all the best ideas aren't necessarily going to start with me. I'm counting on you to come up with these ideas so we can go implement those things so we are a cleaner city, so we're a safer city, so we have more housing. So it's a lot about opening up that process. And I think, you know, and sometimes it's harder in a bureaucracy, but people have to feel comfortable to be able to do that. And I think we were successful in doing that on that personnel side and trusting staff to be able to make decisions.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, actually, I just wanted to revisit your previous question and just let you know there were a total of 42 applicants for this position.
Thank you. Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you, President Kuta. I've researched you a bit, so I'm taking some of my questions from the Jewish News article that was done in 2023, the interview, and the one from Idea Stream in 2023. We had a racial justice task force here, and so I was interested in the fact that you had a racial equity and social justice task force in Akron. Were there any recommendations made by the 2017 Racial Equity and Social Justice Task Force? And if so, did the city implement any of the recommendations?
Yes and yes. I think the year was actually 2020. I don't know whether it's 2017. They may have just misquoted me in the article, but that's okay. I'm pretty sure we started at post-COVID, which is that 2020, 2021. Yeah, there's a number of things when it came, whether it comes to, you know, the purchase of supplies, the hiring of a DEI director. So they met over two years and was a pretty diverse group from across the community. And they made a number of recommendations. Some of the things that they would recommend, like there has to be better school outcomes. I get that, I just wasn't the superintendent. So we worked with the education system to try to make that happen. Or they would say, this is one of the recommendations, we need to have better healthcare access for younger moms who don't. Okay, how, you know, we would work with whether it's transportation or the hospitals to be able to do that. It wasn't necessarily our charge, but we implemented almost all of them. They issued a report, and that is online, and our recommendations also, there was a detailed, probably a good 10 to 15-page detailed report of the implementation on our end and encouraging our partners to do the same.
Thank you. I'm going to ask one more question and then ask questions, and I will have some also.
We can come back to people.
All right, thank you.
Just so everybody on council knows, you know, you get called on more than once.
The article, the Jewish News article mentioned a software called Workday Software, and I was curious to know how that improved Akron's functionality.
Phenomenally, number one. There were two systems that we were using. They were both, didn't talk to each other. One was banner, and I don't mean to disparage any system, but they weren't talking to each other. And so we did a significant amount of research on what's the best system going forward, probably over two years. The impetus of that is that we were hacked during probably one of the worst snowstorms at the time, and so we kind of had to shut our systems down, called the National Guard in, who has a cyber unit, comes in and kind of does these things for cities. One of their recommendations is that you need to improve your IT security because it's not necessarily when, it's not if, it's when. And there was, you know, and there were some breaches. We tried to partner with the county in trying to do a partnership thing and managing all of our IT. It didn't work as smooth as we would have liked, so we looked at vendors and Workday ended up being, you know, the one recommended by our finance department, who did, who at least went over at least a couple of years into infrastructure and hiring the number of people and then implementing Workday. And it's been, it's been pretty seamless. Now, I haven't been there in a year, but as I left, it was pretty seamless. It takes a while on that integration, too. I went through probably a four- or five-year integration through the clerk's office, getting all that data. Sometimes it's not populated the right way and it sends out all kinds of stuff that's not very good, but it took about a year to integrate and it was going pretty well.
All right, I guess that's it.
I'll be glad to go. So what did you know about Cleveland Heights before you started having conversations with the mayor?
What I've, and I've known the mayor for a few years. We were colleagues at the Howa Mayor's Alliance. I used to actually work in Cleveland Heights for a local beer distributor back in the 90s. Didn't know as much, you know, and starting doing some research. The community is very well-regarded. I do know some people that live in the community, people that work in the school system, police officers and such. It's a highly regarded community. You have an excellent park system, excellent homes, a high homeownership, and those are some of the things that, you know, as mayor, we looked at, how do we increase some of those things? And so it's cursory knowledge, but I look forward to learning as much as I can.
What challenges do you think the city has right now, if any?
Well, every city has challenges, and it depends upon the mission that the elected officials kind of decide, hey, this is the one thing that we want to address. And we all, and cities operate or they speak through their budget, whether it's capital or operating, or what's most important to us. And to me, I think around city services and economic development and public safety are, to me, and this is a personal opinion, on the core operations of what we should be doing. And then how do we augment markets to say, we need more housing, we need more vibrant neighborhoods, which gets back to the further question, you know, how have we done, that neighborhoods, in the city of Akron, we had 24 different business districts. I think there's 11 or nine in the city of Cleveland Heights. I've been through a lot of them. They're very vibrant to me, at least as I compare them to other ones. I think those are very positive things going forward, is to continue to augment those things is how to, and you all have to decide at one particular point, what is it that we want? You know, I mean, if you are running and saying, listen, I think we should be the greenest city, the safest city, the ones with the best sidewalks, whatever it may be, then that's the implementation of what we try and do. But like I said, the reputation of Cleveland Heights and how it's run, you know, from the people I've talked to, is an excellent reputation.
What is it about this position that attracted you to apply?
Well, the mayor asked me to serve, and I'm a little bit young, I think, for greener pastures, and so I continue to want to serve in public service. I think public service is noble. I don't think we've done a good enough job over the last 50 years of defining exactly how hard people work every day when it comes to clearing streets, cutting down trees, building buildings, all the things that cities do, I think they do an excellent job. When it comes to government service, that's always been noble to me. I am driven by efficiency. I have a background in economics, and I think the scarce resources that most cities have when it comes to this, I think they have to be used in the most judicious way possible to be the most efficient because it's really not our money, it's somebody else's, and I think that's important.
You currently a resident of the city of Akron?
Yes, sir.
And is it your intention to commute between Akron and Cleveland Heights?
Yes, sir.
Have you had any discussions with the mayor about what your role is going to be in his administration?
We've, you know, I've gone through the charter and what the responsibilities are. And yeah, we've had some cursory, you know, conversations about where I fit in and what would be the best fit and quite frankly, you know, serve at the pleasure. If he wants me to try something else or do something else, you know, there's a lot of experience in being able to look at different departments and how those work and I think bring to bear wherever it may be.
You mentioned having a discussion with Director Clingsdale. Have you had any discussions with any other department heads or directors?
I just listened in on a meeting last week, but nothing deep dive into, and that's what I plan on doing, you know, given a vote, an affirmative vote.
Have you viewed any of our city council meetings on YouTube to get a feel or a flavor for what transpires during those meetings?
I have a significant amount of experience of watching city council meetings from a number of communities. They don't, they don't necessarily change. So no, not necessarily in particular, the meetings, to be able to do that.
And how would you describe your relations that you had with your city council?
I thought they were excellent. And, but we are still all in the relationship business. I think public service is like that. And so a number of council people, we worked very hard, you know, in looking at, and it's divided up a little bit different. There are three at-large and 10 wards. And so different wards have different needs. And I spent seven years as a ward councilperson, knowing that, listen, I wanted to move this stop sign, or I wanted to maybe get this building knocked down. And there's a, there's a different dynamic, so it depends. But it was something that I encouraged my staff and myself to work really hard in developing that relationship, but that also means, you know, it's a two-way street.
Have you had any discussions with your predecessors in this position? Have you reached out to them? Did you think that that was something that would have been important to do, to find out what their impression was of the job?
Eventually, I will reach out to them.
Okay, I'll pass for now. I'll have some further.
Councilman? Councilman Posh?
Thank you, and welcome to Cleveland Heights.
Thank you.
And I am thrilled that you're here to talk to us tonight. I mean, just on paper and from what we've heard and just on the amount of research I've done and apparently what my council members have done, you really seem to be a perfect fit for this job. And I'm glad the mayor is bringing your candidacy forward to us. The relationship between council and the administration is somewhat strained at this point, and this is my personal perspective. I'm new on council, you know, maybe I've got a fresh look at things because there's not a whole lot of history I have, whereas my peers have a little different set of history. So what I'm hopeful to understand is, you know, what is your expectations when it comes down to communicating with council? And let me just sort of preface this with just one observation I've made of me being on council. You know, we have an agenda, and one of the items on the agenda is a monthly or a meeting staple of where the city administrator is supposed to make a presentation to us, just to give us an update, just so we know what's going on. And I think there's only one substantial such presentation since, I believe, April, when I was on council. So I'm not going to ask you to criticize that, but how do you envision your role in the area of like communicating to council, like on a, like on a regular council meeting, on a regular basis?
To me, some of that is contextual, especially, and I say this, if there's somebody that's willing to buy 40 acres of land, obviously, as soon as cities get involved in the process, you know, the price goes up by a factor of about 10. So I think there's some communication to there, but it's also a two-way street. But I think communicating what your concerns are when it comes to the administration, listen, we'd like more of this, we'd like to do this. I don't, you know, that's, to me, that's kind of a natural process. And I guess you had mentioned earlier about, you know, our friction between council and administration. That's not unnatural, especially when you change forms of government. It's just a natural growth of what the institutions are and what everybody's role is. Eons ago, the mayor Frank Jackson came and spoke to our city council in Akron about, you know, because he'd spent a number of years on Cleveland City Council and then was transitioning, might have been president then, but was going to remember mayor, and just talked about that dynamic of how that works. And it is, to me, it was a, it was an eye-opening experience about what my role as a councilperson is and what eventually the role of somebody else is. And to me, and this is the experience that I've had in working with government employees, I said, I don't think they get the credit that they deserve when it comes to the hard work that they do. And I think celebrating that is a good thing, too. And that, like I said, but that is a two-way street when it comes to that communication. I'm more than happy to, you know, to brief you on, hey, this is what's going on, these are the capital budget projects, this is when we're going to start, those type of things. But like I said, I think it's a two-way street on you all or whoever communicating to the person in his chair also. These are the things that are important to me. And how do we get there? Because I think there's a, I think everybody has a natural goal, is that they want to serve their residents. I think that's why we're all doing this, and I think that's important.
Well, I can't speak for council, but I would certainly welcome the idea of having presentations and filling us in. And I think at times, the more communication is sometimes good, the less not so good. I have one other question, and it kind of comes down to, a meaningful value for me is looking at numbers, you know, setting expectations, you know, getting baselines of things and comparing those against work efforts and really seeing how people have not necessarily performed, but, you know, how you did. With the understanding, when you first look at some of these numbers, they may not look so good, but then when you sort of set some expectations and you realize, hey, look, you know, we're doing X, and we really should be doing Y, what's it going to take to be able to do Y? Is it reasonable? And then continually report back and stay in touch of that. So really, you know, turning expectations into metrics. In your prior role in Akron, I mean, have you, did you do anything like that?
Yeah, significant number. A long time ago, Mayor's Action Center, you know, the turnaround time on a complaint was astronomically high in the number of days. Part of it was because we didn't have enough 3-1-1 operators to be able to do that and to get those complaint, get those, you know, complaints into the, into the queue or into the system. But cutting down those number of days, it's never going to be perfect. It's very rarely going to be, hey, we're going to be able to get this, you know, the next day. It just depends on what it is. But I'm all in favor of setting data points for some sort of metrics to say, okay, we didn't get there. But it also, it's also a collective vision on how that happens, too. What's important to city council? And those are, it's a rhetorical question, not necessarily to answer. Is it driving down the number of complaints? Is it making sure that they're, you know, inspected or done within three days? Those are all things I think are worthy conversations to have. These are important, how do we do them? Setting that benchmark, and then if you don't meet it, why? What are the contextual things that stopped you from doing that? And I, continual self-improvement, I think, is what we're supposed to be doing when it comes to delivery of a service, whatever that service may be. Thank you.
Vice President Russell?
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I don't know if you heard me. Can you describe some challenging situations that you faced as a mayor in Akron, and how did you resolve those issues and what did you learn from it?
Well, it really depended on the day. I think there's challenges every single day. And this is, this is a job that really, that you bring along, I think you bring along your entire being because it does consume you for 24 hours. And so whether you're up in the middle of the night or you're up in the morning doing something, the delivery of those services, to me, was a challenge and not having enough resources to be able to do that. How do we craft ways to be able to do it in a more efficient way? Is that a partnership? Public safety is another. You know, how do we continue to, how do we address gun issues? You know, are we getting them out of cars? What are we doing on those things? How do we better involved in the community as opposed to saying, you know what, we're just going to do those things? How do we build a better relationship? To me, that's a daily thing. That's what city workers do. I don't care if it's, you know, the street department, the police, fire department, we're all ambassadors, I think, of a city that need to, that need to do things on a daily basis to build community trust. And to me, I think that's extremely important to be able to do that. Those are just a few. I mean, they go down the list of, when you have an emergency, what's the best response? How do we coordinate with other communities to be able to say, is there a chemical spill? And I'm just taking these off the top of my head because we did have them. But, you know, a sewer break that cuts off another community, what are those things that we're doing? That all takes planning. And these, and the city workforce and others who are involved, they do this, you know, on a daily basis, plan for disasters because they may to happen. Who are we calling to be able to do this? To me, I think that is significant. Doesn't, may never see it because you may never, may not have to ever call them, but those, to me, I think are significant in those planning things. There's also challenges to those, too. Maybe this community doesn't have that, and you'll need to be able to support them doing this. Those are all relationships that you build. And I know there are a number of communities that touch Cleveland Heights border-wise that are significant. It's a dense area up here. That's what, that's what Cogga County is. And those are significant to have those relationships, but that's also a challenge.
Have you, can you tell me or articulate any lessons that you've learned in dealing with those challenges?
Oh, humility is one. I'm not a fan of victory laps because I think there's somebody that's going to kick you in the rear end in about five minutes after you're done. So I, and that was something that we imparted to the staff, is that whatever we're doing now, it's going to turn around and be the same thing tomorrow. You have to deal with something different tomorrow. So we never, I never wanted to rest on, you know, a victory. And I think there were some significant victories in doing that and also the challenges to do it, putting money, more money into public space, into community centers. That's a challenge to be able to do all that at once, but at the end of the day, after five or six years when they're all done, it's like, sometimes you get bogged down in the minutia of, you know, we got to keep moving an inch, keep moving an inch. But at the end of the day, there's some really good things that are happening on a daily basis. And so humility is, at least I hope I learned that.
How would you adapt your leadership style to align with Cleveland Heights' specific needs and values?
I think it's assessing what those are, too, and I think it's getting that feedback from, you know, it is, it is your all vision for the community because the community has entrusted you in those elected roles to say, these are the things that are important because you went out and asked them, what is important in your neighborhood, in your ward, you know, throughout this? And they tell you, I think it's listening to that part of it, too. It's not my agenda. I spent 25 years working on my agenda. Okay, I'm delighted to be able to, be able to help an agenda, so to speak, with the experience that I have.
And how do you plan to collaborate with Cleveland Heights City Council and addressing community concerns effectively?
Well, it's listening first. I mean, I have to know what they are. And then I think there's, sometimes there are paths forward that we both see, and I think we gain by, you know, listening to each other. If you're a fan of game theory, I'm a big fan of getting to the, getting to the bottom right corner right away because I think, you know, when both of us win or when the, and I don't, it's not a dynamic of us and them, it is, you know, how do the residents win? I think if we present each other with solutions to help each other, I think that helps.
And what strategies would you implement to ensure financial stability and physical responsibility for us?
Adhering to a budget. And these are, these are, this is, and a long time ago, our old budget director told me that, you know, budgets are roadmaps. There are things that happen during the year and whether it be, you know, what, we want to do this this year, so we're going to put it in the budget. Things happen during the year, which specifically to the workday thing. We didn't have that budgeted when we got hacked, and so we needed to find resources to be able to do something right away. Other things got put on the back burner because we needed a functioning IT system for communications, for public safety. And so as those things happen, you have to be able to adjust on some of those things. And in the way that she had described it is that, you know, they don't take a giant bucket and just put a bunch of money in there and then say, well, when they can use it, they can use it. There are things happen during the year that cause other things to maybe get done or not get done. And I think having a robust conversation of what the importance of those things is important on your monthly basis or on your quarterly basis to be able to do some of those things. things. Because there's a level of expectation sometimes, like, hey, we're going to do this. But when you can, when you add, you know, when you stick to a budget, and that takes management, too. It takes work. You know, department heads and directors have to look at that and say, well, listen, we're really going way over on this. You know, how do we, how do we not do that? I think that that's a weekly, quarterly thing, not just, well, at the end of the year, we don't have enough money. That doesn't work like that, at least in my experience.
I'll ask one more, and then I'll let you pass it to someone else, and I'll come back. What innovation solutions did you implement as mayor in Akron that you believe could benefit Cleveland Heights?
Well, a lot of things I think we're doing significantly already. When it comes to neighborhood investment, when it comes to public, you know, public services on some of those things, the Mayor's Action Center, I think, is significant. I don't know how old it is in Cleveland Heights when it comes to that. Those are, I think, having a central point of where people can go. They might not be able to get help. They may call you and say, listen, we need help with this. We actually know that this is a county program. It's not necessarily the city. Having that information, one of the innovative things that we did was in and around housing, was partner with United Way and 2-1-1 and have them absorb that. So if you had a housing concern, my rent's too high, I'm getting evicted, I need to find a new place, I'm home, 2-1-1 was able to handle that for us. And I think, to me, I think getting the right information as quickly as possible to people that need it is gold when it comes to that.
Okay, I will pass it on to another.
It's just one of many. And there was something attached to the application, too, of some things that I think that were significant when it came to the innovative approach on some of those things, if you want to take a look at that.
Thank you so very much.
Any follow-ups? Mr. Horgan, you said you looked at the charter to see, you know, what direction did you get from that?
It's an expansive role. I can, I can, I can tell you that. When it comes to, you know, what the responsibilities are, nothing seemed out of the ordinary of an issue that we haven't dealt before, but that's the.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
What I'm asking you is, what did you get out of it? What instruction did you get from it? I understand that there was an unusual, but what, you know, I'm going to be doing this, that, and the other based on what it says right here in writing.
It is the direction, you know, of what these departments are going, managing the budget process, making sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. If we're going to replace the sewer line, if we're going to do those things, or if we have a community event, how are all those planned out? It is making sure on that city administration side, those things do get done, and they do get it done in a responsible way when it comes to, you know, how we're budgeting for it and, you know, what's going over, kind of watching all of that.
No, that was the important part I was hoping you would say because it does say the city administrator shall assist the mayor in preparing the budget. So it's not an option.
Hmm.
Okay. What, I better put my glasses on for this one. What was your philosophy when you were mayor regarding your communication and information sharing with, and like city council? How often did you meet with city council members individually?
It depends. Our staff was active, and I was, too, whether it was going to ward meetings or whether going to community meetings or discussing with them a particular project in their ward. We had three at large and 10 wards. So there's a little more, and it's also a little bit bigger. But I had weekly meetings with council leadership. This is, especially on the preview of legislation, and I hope I'm not stepping too far on that side. We, you know, this is, this is where we're going with this. These are the things that we're bringing in. You know, what gives you concern, you know, and then kind of going from there and then taking feedback, you know? It just depends. But it was a really good relationship with the council president just because, you know, I had known her for a significant number of years. And so was able to fall back on a lot of those things.
I take it that the two of you are planning on meeting with leadership on a weekly basis? Did you get that far? I don't know.
We haven't specifically discussed that, but it is my anticipation that the weekly meetings with mayor, city administrator, and the council officers will continue, assuming nothing changes.
Okay. And what about, was council, under your leadership, was council allowed to interact with staff? You know, could they call them, text them, that kind of thing?
By charter, they're only allowed to interact with cabinet members. Now, did some of them call a captain of the police?
That's what I meant. I meant like directors.
It's probably a similar role to that, yeah. If they had a specific concerns, but it just all depend on the topic, too. Some of the things I took over. If they had a particular issue, like, I don't want this happening, too bad. It's not too bad, but we have an emergency, it's got to happen. So it wasn't, yeah, there was a lot of interaction with those. But they mostly would call a director and say, you know, why is this, why is this doing this? Why didn't, I didn't, I didn't, not I didn't approve this. And there was a, I'll give you a quick example. There was a park we wanted to put a walking trail around because the residents had, they really wanted a walking trail. And it's not a real long one, it's about a quarter of a mile. It was just crushed limestone. The council person didn't want it. But, you know, I apologize, but I said, you know, the residents do want it, now he loves it. So sometimes it's, you know, you don't want that kind of interaction where we're doing things against each other. But it was a walking track. It wasn't necessarily, you know, a new stop sign or a new intersection or tearing something up. So, and plus, it was budgeted on that side, too, and it wasn't very expensive.
Sure. Well, thank you for that. So it does say also in the charter that you would give a report every six months. Now, we've, this is three years, you know, this month, actually, would be the end of three years the mayor's been in office. And there's three or four of us that have been in office for three years. And we've only gotten one, one report in those three years from the city administrator. Were you able to, I guess I could ask this two different ways, but are you willing to, or have you guys discussed, let me put it this way, have you guys discussed that part of the charter? And are you, did you commit to, did you decide, yeah, that's, we need to do this because that is something council and the community expect?
I can't speak, obviously, for past practices, but you know, if it's, we haven't gotten that far into the details to do that. But if it does say that that's what the city administrator will do, then, you know, it's a charter obligation. I don't plan on violating the charter.
And mayor, you could comment on that. I mean, because ultimately, I assume that you prepare that together, you and the city administrator.
So I can, I can, I can speak to this. Mr. Horgan and I have not discussed that sort of granular detail just yet. But it is absolutely my, my goal to sort of set up that regular system and not just, you know, biennially either. I think that what Mr. Horgan spoke about before, sort of having more, and this, I think, is a two-way street where we would anticipate things like sort of a quarterly meeting of the finance committee, for instance, in order to receive the kind of information that I would like to provide to council on a more regular basis in that particular setting, structure. And so that sort of thing, of course, the two reports a year, you know, I think the language is with such, you know, recommendations as the mayor deems appropriate or something like that. But, but I think, you know, having that as a baseline, but then sort of additional communication and conversation, I think, is going to be important moving forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before I, yeah, I don't know if more, go ahead.
This regards council and the mayor, and the mayor and the city administrator working together regarding the budget which we're in right now. From your experience as a mayor background and anticipating that you'll be the city administrator, not the mayor, would you anticipate working with council on the budget? How would you do that on the budget and monthly and quarterly financial reports?
Well, I do know past practice is that we would share those quarterly reports with council. Obviously, everything had to have a code when it, you know, when it came through the budget process to be able to be appropriated. One of the things that I wanted to do early on as mayor was get to a calendar budget because I've dealt with a number of communities and really is a feather in the cap to be able to do an operating budget because sometimes there's a, and I'll speak to, I won't name governments, but there's a malaise that sets around December when it's like, you know, hey, now we got to wait till March. And it's, and it's, like I said, I think it's something should be celebrated if you can do a budget on a calendar year because it just sets expectations. It sets certainty, which I think one of the things that government should do is be accountable and be certain that people know their expectations of what's coming next. Plus, it's, it's a, I celebrated Budget Passage Day. I did, just because I think it's important to the, to the, to the workers that are here to say, listen, we have an operating budget, we know what we're going to do. There's not like some indecision to do that. So working through that on a quarterly basis, but it takes a long time to be able to prepare it and to go through those. And like I said, budgets are roadmaps. And so you see revenue expectations, and I'll give you one quick example. When it came to COVID, you know, the Treasury Department, the state of Ohio, even our internals said, there's going to be a significant drop off when all of the, when everybody just shut off. We had to do some things in an emergency way that were not pleasant. They ended up not being as bad as we thought they were going to be, but there was that issue to be able to do it. And so, but that was also done with, you know, the full knowledge of the legislative authority, you know, said, listen, these things are coming. And they were generally understanding that, you know, if you don't have the money to be able to do it because basically the economy shut down for a significant amount of time, and we didn't know. I'm not the public health expert. I relied on hospitals and the hospital systems and public health to be able to make those best decisions. Those are, it's one emergency, but it can happen.
Thank you. How much do you know about our issues with severance and the owners of severance?
Cursory, not as much as I hope to be able to learn here soon. It's a, it's a big area, obviously. I don't know how many acres it is, I'm going to be guessing around 50 or so.
60.
Yeah.
The developer.
I just have two more quick questions. What have you been doing since you were no longer mayor of Akron?
Well, I could show you a picture of my two grandkids, but they probably won't show up. That's one. I've been doing some consulting on, just for people that want to know how to get things done. There's a one-year, you know, kind of hiatus. I could not consult with the, my previous past employer, which, you know, I haven't and I won't. I'm not doing anything else if this is in the affirmative. This is, this is, to me, it's a, I, I'll say this out loud. I'm not sure if I have the mental capacity to be able to, two jobs, but I think this is important enough. In fact, I know it's important enough when it comes to a city. Like I said, it's complex, but it's a simple mission, which I think revolves around customer service. And so that's kind of why I've been keeping myself busy.
Thank you. And just as a point of information, I don't know if you've talked about this or not, but as city administrator, the city administrator is the vice chair of the Transportation Mobility Citizen Committee. So that's just an ad piece of advice that I wanted you to know. Turn my phone off, and thank you.
Councilman Petras?
Thank you. Mr. Horgan, thank you so much for your interest in Cleveland Heights. Our city is really going to benefit from your experience. If you would be willing, I think that a lot of council members would love to have an individual conversation with you.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much for that. Have you by chance looked at our 2024 budget?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Are you by chance familiar with the budget discussions that we're in the middle of right now?
Not in a granular detail. I can guess numbers, I can guess what, you know, but not necessarily the specific issues around, hey, we want this or we want to do that, just not in that way.
I think a lot of folks ideally would like to have a budget in place before the end of the year. But six of seven council members have publicly expressed an interest for temporary budget. And so what do you see your role being in that process?
Well, if we have been having this conversation in September as opposed to now is maybe getting us to the end of the year as opposed to a temporary, because I think they're important. It just provides that level of certainty for the, for what we're going to do next when it comes to the city. And those are the decisions that the electorate made because they elected you, because there was the vision that you said, hey, I want to do this or that, and they agreed. My role would, obviously, you know, it's, it's, it's in that supportive role to be able to get people to, you know, what are the issues that you have? Is there a solution that says, I can agree to that or I can't agree to that? What are, and I don't know what those impasses are, and I won't speculate.
Do you envision yourself joining our committee of the whole and council meetings?
What is the, I'll ask a question if you don't mind.
So typically, we have committee of the whole and council meetings, the first and third weeks of the month. I think that it's helpful to join those meetings so that you're aware of the knowledge that's shared. Do you anticipate joining those meetings or?
Like I said, I haven't gotten to that granular detail. I don't have an opposition to it. I mean, I obviously speak with the mayor and kind of go from there.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, I would be happy for the new city administrator to join me at those meetings.
Councilman Cobb?
How would you describe your management style?
It's hands-off until I need to be. I think giving people the, the, I mean, there's a number of, people are professional. And I think trusting people to be able to make those right decisions, but I think, and it kind of depends on, on some of that. I tend to pay attention to detail sometimes, and my dad told me something a long time to, you know, count the pennies because the dollars will take care of themselves. I, so if it's a manhole cover that's off, or if it's something, that's not, I think that's what we're all supposed to be doing, is looking at some of those things that make the city and make the community better. But it's, it's more hands-off.
I think we're all concerned that you would now be the third city administrator that we've had in three years and the last city administrator that left. One of the reasons that he mentioned for retiring was he had a different management style than the mayor. What have you done to satisfy yourself that you will be a good fit for this city and working for our mayor?
I think in the, in the almost 30-plus years of public service experience and dealing with personalities from A to Z, I think I don't let a whole thing, I don't pay attention to social media because I'm not on it. I don't, it's just a, you know, it's a relationship business. And I've built a number of relationships with different personalities that I think have been successful. I think that's the key.
Okay. Do you foresee there being any challenges in, you're essentially reporting to someone that is younger and less experienced than yourself?
Not at all.
Have you ever had that situation before?
Uh, depends if you consider the education part of it as part of the experience, but it wasn't for a longer period.
Okay. And when you were mayor of Akron, did you have a right-hand person that was your?
Chief of staff?
Chief of staff.
I had 10 of them. No, I'm just kidding. I had one chief of staff, but I, you know, if there was an issue that I thought needed more of my input, I gave it.
Was that someone that you brought over from the clerk's office when you transitioned to be?
No.
Was that someone that was already working there at City Hall, or is this someone you brought in new?
My first chief of staff was someone that I brought in new. And he transitioned out and went to work for a foundation, and I brought in another chief of staff, who was actually the chief city prosecutor.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it.
Follow-up on this side?
What steps would you take to foster diversity, equality, and inclusion within Cleveland Heights operations and a broader community?
Well, that has to start with an internal conversation of whether it is diverse. I think having a number of different voices in those conversations to look at that is extremely important, not across gender lines, race lines, what, and how that works. And we struggle with this as a city, and I know a number of governments have struggled with their purchases. And so we specifically hired someone, we, and the market in Akron wasn't as rich as it could have been, like maybe it is up in Cogga County or even in Columbus. And so it was a significant attraction model to say, how are some of these companies coming down here? How are we doing that? Whether it was minority business contracting through bounce and a lot of different programs that we had initiated to say, if this is, what are the services that small and minority-owned firms need to maybe get into the government contracting business? Because sometimes people just avoid it because it's just too darn, it's cumbersome, they got to think that they have to know somebody. We tried to break down those barriers to say, and sometimes the service just didn't fit. It wasn't what we were looking for. Other times, it's worked pretty well.
What would be your approach to working with city staff and management on the day-to-day operations, long-term impact?
Can you expand on that a little bit? I just don't understand it as well as I should.
So on the day-to-day operations, how would you use your expertise to create a long-term impact to make Cleveland Heights a great city?
I, I, I think it's important to listen and, and hearing is different than listening. And so I think you have a number of professionals that I think are already on staff to be able to say, what is it that you see as, as it dovetails to the city council, mayor's vision of how we do these things? And, and what are the resources that I can bring to bear and how can I help? I think we're in the helping business. It's not a, it's not a tyrannical or it's not, you know, I said this way. Those are emergencies. Those aren't the daily things of how we make the city better. And I think there are, there are, you know, people are dedicated to public service. It's, it's a different type of work, as you well know, but I think it's noble.
Yeah. So my last question, you may have to think about it a minute and you probably haven't had the time, but you, you did suggest that you and the mayor had several conversations and you probably know a little bit about Cleveland Heights, but maybe not as much as you want to know. So, but you have to have some type of explorations or inspirations of what you want to do. So in the, your first year, what would you find to be a, you, something you would love to achieve in Cleveland Heights?
You're right, I do need to think about that. I, I think there are short and long-term goals when it comes to everything. I, I think, and, and I'm, I'm a newer person too. Nobody knows me, but I, I, you can Google my life over the last 25 years and it's pretty available. I, you know, it's that ability to get along and build relationships. I think that is extremely, I want people to trust me, that I'm not coming in, I'm not trying to take your job, I'm not the mayor, okay? That's, I'm working for the mayor and I'm okay with that. That's sometimes people find that difficult, but I have a passion for public service and I think that's important.
Uh, I just want you to say that was the correct answer, is building trust. And we need to be able to build trust with our staff, with our residents and within the council.
That's daily. That's like, because we will fail at times.
The job every day.
I know, I agree.
It's a job every day. Thank you.
Um, the last city administrator said he didn't really relate to the Six Sigma approach, you know, it just wasn't his thing. Where are you on that?
Um, it's, it's a valuable tool. I know a number of our staff have gone through, you know, previous staff have gone through a lot of those things. It's, you know, I, I think as a, as an institution, sometimes governments get labeled as highly inefficient and I don't disagree. Sometimes they're supposed to be because there are regulatory things in place to be able to do that. I think there's a significant amount of improvement and I don't mean in Cleveland Heights, I mean in the process by which we deliver those services, they can be more efficient.
So you, you believe it's something that, I mean, it is in the corporate world, you think it transfers?
I, I think to a certain degree, yes. Not everything is going to transfer. It's not a, and I'll, I'll go through this. There are some, some things, and I, I believe this, they just finished a park in the middle of downtown. It's a subsidized venture. There are some things that government should subsidize when it comes to those resident things that people go to, whether it's an in-the-park concert, whether it's ice skating, they're not going to make, they're not going to be, they're going to be revenue neutral at best. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think residents want those things and I think that's a good use of, of what those things are. It's, it's an outside example. Not everything transfers into, because you hear this push of government should be, you know, more like a business. There are some things that we should be more like a business and then there's some things that probably are not. Personal opinion only.
I mean, thank you for that. Uh, Councilman Maddox, go ahead.
I just wanted to add some clarification to the conversation around Six Sigma. It actually originated in manufacturing, then went into the corporate world, but it's been in the municipal world for some time now. There, my wife and I both are certified through that process and so process improvement is something that does expand all organizational structures. How you utilize it within those structures is the difference. But I, just for the public sake, if they're curious about what this is, it's something that's implemented across all industries and all organizational levels. It's just that some organizations have no experience in terms of process improvement with that, but there are plenty of people with black, yellow and green belts across municipal governments across the country as well that I work with in consulting all the time. So when you see a lot of those process improvements start. And so you're absolutely right in terms of the fact that there's a, there's a, there are places for that within the government. There's places that doesn't work, just like in finance or just like in the manufacturing. So we're absolutely happy to hear that.
Thanks.
Um, I'm going to ask the law director a question, just so you feel included. So often we do, you know, personnel matters in executive session. Would it be possible to go into executive session if, I, I don't know if anybody wants to do that, but, okay, I'm, I'm still going to ask this question.